We'll call this meeting to order. And we'll start with a roll call.
Sharon Harvey?
Here.
Lisa Roman?
Here.
John Mastin?
Here.
Erica Rand?
Here.
Kyle Nederman?
Here. We'll move on to a moment of silent prayer or private reflection. Amen. And we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have the need for an executive session?
Not today.
Moving on, we'll move on to Section 2.1 to our new and maintained National Board Certified Teachers in the K-12 Foundation.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Every student deserves to be taught by an accomplished teacher. National Board Certification was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. In addition to being highly respected, it is the highest certification a teacher may obtain. The certification process requires that teachers demonstrate standards-based evidence of the positive effect they have on student learning in alignment with the five core propositions. They must exhibit a deep understanding of their students, content knowledge, use of data, and assessments, and teaching practice. They must also show that they participate in learning communities and provide evidence of ongoing reflection and continuous learning. LHUSD now employs 27 NBCTs. They join the 125,000 NBCTs nationwide. So tonight, we recognize four of our staff members who are new NBCTs or have maintained their National Board Certification. National Board requires that certificates are maintained every five years. Accomplished educators must complete a portfolio that includes a video of their teaching practice. Although Dustin Zampona and Nina Mercing serve in administrative roles, in order to remain an NBCT, they must prove they are still able to meet the standards of the National Board. So I would ask all four, when you join me up here, to stay up here. So first, we have Dustin Zampona.[185.26][185.26][applause] So Dustin has worked for LHUSD since 2012. He originally certified in 2017 in physical education, early adolescence, and young adulthood. Dustin described what he learned from National Board as a process that teaches you how to reflect. He constantly asks himself, how does this impact students? How does this impact his staff? And how does this impact his community? Which we know leads to great things for kids. Next, we have Nina Mercing.[221.01][221.01][applause] So Nina began her career at LHUSD in 2007. Nina originally certified as an early childhood generalist in 2017. She describes the impact of National Board as igniting a desire in her to continue her education so she could impact more students and help other teachers develop their professional capacity, which we also know does great things for kids and our staff. Congratulations to you both on maintaining your certification, and please stay here.[254.62][254.62][applause] We are now excited to welcome our newest nationally-board certified teachers. So Stephanie first began at LHUSD in 2002. Her certificate area is literacy, reading, language arts, early and middle childhood. She currently serves as a second-grade teacher at Nautilus Elementary. She describes what she has learned as a result of National Board Certification as a journey that has helped to reflect on how her knowledge of students, instruction, and assessment are all interrelated. And next, we have Rachel Charette.[294.02][294.02][applause] Rachel could not join us, but her certificate area is early childhood generalist. She serves as a sixth-grade gifted teacher at Starline Elementary School, and she describes her National Board as a journey that made her question every decision she makes as an accomplished teacher and how those decisions will best impact her students. So congratulations to you on reaching this accomplishment. And now, we are excited to partner with the LHUSD K-12 Foundation to support National Board. I'd like to invite them up so they may honor the accomplished teachers.[328.31][328.31][applause]
Good evening, everybody. My name is Janice Dump, and I am the president of the K-12 Foundation. The purpose of the K-12 Foundation for the Lake Havasu Unified School District is to promote excellence in public education by supporting the students, faculty, and staff of the district through program enrichment. By earning National Board Certification, you have truly exemplified excellence. The K-12 Foundation would like to recognize you, your relentless dedication to excellence, and your amazing accomplishment with this gift.
And finally, Stephanie, as our newest NBCT, I would like to pin you.[379.66][379.66][applause]
Thank you, Ms. Janet. Okay, we're gonna get a picture with all of you. Chris, Kate, Tom, everybody in town.
Moving on, we'd like to invite Carol Nowakowski with the Lake Havasu City Education Association.
Congratulations to our new national boards and our maintaining. So what I have just given you, I'm Carol Nowakowski. I am the president of the local association. And what I just handed to our board and our directors is a conversation that I had with one of our representatives, John Galetti, for Legislative District 30. It is my conversation with him about a bill that he just recently proposed, and it's a bill that has resurfaced, that's similar to last year, that is no longer got denied. This bill would make us have to post lessons and such, which his view on it is that it's not going to impede teachers or impact the district in any way. And so my concern in my conversation with him, you will see, is that someone will have to do it. And based on the information that he presented, and then after speaking to our curriculum director, is that we don't have a parent login, as he presented in my conversation. So there are things that I'm concerned about. One other thing that I'm majorly concerned about is that he's not reaching out, and I don't see our legislators reaching out to us as educators, those that are impacting our students and our community, that I am encouraging you, as I always do, please reach out to our three representatives. And here, he does provide his legislative email for you to reach out to him, to have any discussion with him regarding his bills that are presented. This week, the Ed Department did not meet. I believe it's crossover week, so we're finalizing what's going on in the House and the Senate. They are finalizing them, and then they will cross over to have discussion in the committee. So these bills will continue to be discussed, but it's a House bill, so it'll be discussed in the Senate. So I ask you, if you do not know how to do request to speak, I will help you. I'm more than willing to help you sign up, and I've put myself out there as a personal as self. And then you'll also see his conversation with me about who has, is against and for. There are 300 and something people against his bill and 194 for it. And again, my concern is that they're just not reaching out to our public educators and having that conversation about how their bills will be impacting us at the local level. They are representing us, Legislative District 30, and so there are a handful of bills. Ones that were spoken about tonight is, for instance, the superintendent contract. I'm not sure if you're aware of that one, but HB 2291, that's reflective based on our letter grades. There is the organizational deadline. I know you guys always meet and are very good about meeting that first week in January, but they're opening it up, so if you have a thought on those, please share with them. They're opening it up so you don't have to meet so early. You can meet on your regular third month or third week, and you can do your organizational meeting on that day. And that is HB 2663. And then there's just some other bills that I'll share with you, but there's, like, the non-public school students, interscholastics, which is SB 1564 for ESA students who are already receiving funding, and then having them join us interscholastically. And then, let me see if I have a couple others that I wanted to share. The one that I questioned and I wasn't sure about, that I want to get some follow-up on, is HB 2459. It's the governing board members being employed by the district, and so I wanted to find out if that also includes, like, substitute teaching, and if that's included in the bill. Because as rural Arizona, we need substitutes, and I know at least two, if not more, of you have substituted in our classrooms, and so I would hate that that bill would relinquish you of being able to do that. So, any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Moving on, we have one call to the public. We have Jillian Usher.
Hello, school board and directors and audience. My name is Jillian Usher. I am the executive director of the Lake Havasu Museum of History. I first wanted to share and invite you all to an event that we're having that is educational in nature. We are having an exhibit opening. It's Through the Eyes of the Youth, is a Holocaust exhibit that is focused on the youth of the Holocaust and their resilience. It opens this Friday, February 24th, at 6:00 p.m. There's also a partnership with Mojave Community College the previous evening, Thursday, the 23rd, at 5:30. The director of the Martin Springer Institute of Northern Arizona University, who crafted this exhibit, will be talking on women's resilience in the Holocaust and two survivors that actually lived in Arizona after the time period. So it's gonna be very educational content. I also would like to say that our opening evening on that Friday is free and open to all educators in Lake Havasu City, and that means really anybody involved in education in any capacity. So I welcome you all to come to that. I also did want to share that I was able to sit as a community member in the science curriculum meeting that was at the Lake Havasu High School. I was very impressed by the curriculum, primarily Savis. I thought it was a beautiful system, user-friendly, and it was very in line with how kids view technology and the way that we use user-friendly methods. And it's a lot more modernized than I had seen in other people pitching for that evening. And so overall, I just thought it was a great system, and I was very honored, as a community member, to be able to view the process of curriculum adoption. And so I wanted to thank you as well.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve it as presented.
I second.
Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Erica Rand?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kyle Nederman?
Yes. And moving on to action items, 6.1, business services.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The Arizona Department of Education notified the Lake Havasu Unified School District in January of 2022 that the district had more than three months' working capital in its food service fund. ADE requested an action plan addressing how to spend the excess funds, which can only be spent on food service equipment. The district's plan includes replacement of elementary school cafeteria tables that are decades old and have been repaired multiple times or are damaged and unsafe to operate. The purchase of new cafeteria tables, we purchased through School Source AZ through the Mojave Cooperative Contract at a price not to exceed $150,000, to include tax and freight. This item has been reviewed by food service and purchasing.
I move that we approve 6.1 as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Erica Rand?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
And Kyle Nederman?
Yes. Moving on to 6.2, student achievement, the Savas Science Textbook Adoption for Grades 9 through 12.
Sorry, I'm moving over here for my presentation. Mr. President and governing board, LHUSD expanded Core Knowledge and CKLA Amplify Curriculum to all K-8 schools in 2122. The last textbook adoption for science at the high school level was 2006. The LHUSD Science Textbook Adoption Committee unanimously recommends Savis Science Textbooks, Earth Science, Environmental Science, Experience Chemistry, and Miller &amp; Levine Biology as the approved textbooks starting in 2023, 2024. The Lake Havasu Unified School District is committed to providing a guaranteed and viable curriculum, ensuring that all students have access to high-quality materials that support our mission and vision, are aligned to standards, and prepare students for their future. A request for proposals was shared with the public starting in June of 2022 and closed in August of 2022. Using a rubric, three vendors were selected for further review. A committee of stakeholders reviewed three options, which were on display for 60 days in the district boardroom as required by policy and statute. The committee especially considered how the textbook provided instructional support to teachers and met the needs of Lake Havasu High School students. Savis stood out in terms of usability for teachers and students, superior lab offerings, content better aligned to standards, responsiveness, and open parent communication tools. The LHHS Science Department currently uses textbooks from Savis. The cost to purchase seven years of student and teacher materials, digital licenses, and professional development is not to exceed $190,000, including shipping and handling. By purchasing over the course of seven years, we will receive a discount in the amount of 20%. Lab materials and supplies will be identified and purchased at a later date. The district will use ESAR and/or other appropriate funds for completing this purchase. This item has been reviewed by the Business Department. The quote is attached, and a presentation will follow. And I apologize for everyone in this room who's seen this many, many times. So we're going to start with the adoption process, because the process is laid out in both federal, in this case, because we're using federal dollars, and state law. And so the first part of the adoption process is a request for proposals. And being that we're using federal dollars, that required us to ask vendors to submit a request for proposals. And like I said, this happened last June and ran till August. It required us to have items here at a specific time, unbox at a specific time, meet all the legal requirements, and then the vendors needed to meet federal funding guidelines. So with that request for proposals, we were required to use a rubric to score. Cost had to be the highest weighted factor as we looked at those proposals, and we invited the top three vendors to participate in the process. So after we did the request for proposals portion, we then moved on to Arizona Revised Statutes and the textbook adoption process that's laid out in law. And so the committee, we're required to have a committee developed to vet the textbooks. We have two public meetings held. The textbooks were on display for 60 days, and then we're going to make that recommendation to the board. Then our next step is going to be to implement the curriculum, which means purchasing materials, distributing materials, developing curriculum maps and pacing guides, assessments, and materials for teachers, providing professional development for teachers, and continuing to refine those maps. And so that last implementation piece is recursive in nature, as implementation doesn't just happen like that. It will happen over a number of years as we get more comfortable with the curriculum. So I just wanted to make sure to point out what it says in statute that we are required to do. And so ARS 15271 says that the governing board shall approve for common schools the course of study, the basic textbook for each course, and all units recommended for credit under the general subject title. It requires that the meetings to adopt a textbook are open to the public, as prescribed in law, and to make available to review for the public for a period of at least 60 days the textbooks. And for our purposes here, a textbook means instructional materials and other content. Board policy, IGD, also says that all new programs and courses of study will be subject to board approval, as will the elimination of these courses of study. The governing board acknowledges the legislative affirmation that public school students should be taught to value each other as individuals and not be taught to resent or hate other races or classes of people. No school district shall include in its program of instruction any courses or classes that (a) promote the overthrow of the United States government, (b) promote resentment toward a race or class of people, (c) are designed primarily for students of a particular ethnic group, or (d) advocate for ethnic solidarity instead of treatment as students as individuals. This does not restrict or prohibit courses for Native American peoples that are required by law, grouping students according to academic performance, including capacity for English as a new language, which may result in disparate impact by ethnicity, courses that include the history of an ethnic group that are open to any student, courses or classes that include the discussion of controversial aspects of history, instruction about the Holocaust or any other instances of genocide or the historical oppression of a particular group of people based on an ethnicity. Continuing with board policy that is aligned to Arizona Revised Statute, textbook selection committees should be guided by the following. Textbooks shall be recommended to support and enrich the school curriculum and meet the personal needs and academic needs of students. Resources shall be appropriate for the subject area, the age, emotional development, ability level, learning styles, and social development of students. Resources that are recommended shall provide a background of information that motivates students to examine their own attitudes, comprehend their duties, responsibilities, rights, and privileges as participating citizens. Resources shall provide information on differing sides of an issue. They should be recommended for the atypical student as well as the average student. They should be recommended for their strengths rather than rejected for their weaknesses and judged as a whole. So that is policy specifically as it relates to textbook adoption and course creation. This is our policy that relates to our district's vision and mission, and I want to highlight that the purpose of all of the curriculum that we adopt in all of our courses should engage each student with a focus on scholarship, character, and humanity, so that all students may graduate with academic and social skills necessary to become responsible citizens and contributing members of society. One more, and again, so thinking about our curriculum philosophy, responsible citizenship, critical thinkers and problem solvers using knowledge, reason, and logic, analyzing problems using that knowledge and skills they have required. Critical thinkers think in complex ways, develop original thoughts and arguments. All subjects within the curriculum are interrelated, and emphasis is on research-based instructional and management strategies. Okay, now specifically, moving on to science. So for this specific curriculum adoption, we posted on our website and solicited feedback via QR codes for the textbook materials. We emailed stakeholders during this and asked them about their concerns, and then we sought that information from the vendors and shared it back out with stakeholders, specifically information on parent communication, lesson plan resources, differentiation approaches, incorporating writing. We held two stakeholder meetings that were open to the public. Two public members attended science, and one member of the public outside that stakeholder group came to social studies. We also published information in the newspaper, at school board meetings, social media, community groups, and 27 visitors, actually 29 as of today, reviewed the curriculum.
Any comments to the native on the curriculum?
Well, I'll go through that. It's in here.
Okay.
So our committee members for science were made up of the following people. You can see who they are on the left, and then a summary of who they are on the right. So we have six high school teachers, a middle school teacher, four coaches, two high school administrators, two district administrators, two students, two parents, superintendent, and two board members. Courses we are adopting for biology, chemistry, earth science, environmental science, physics, and integrated science. We are not adopting for our advanced placement courses, as they were just adopted recently. And so they'll be using their previously adopted but new resources. So as a reminder, our curriculum context. K-8, we have Core Knowledge. Core Knowledge was developed by E.D. Hirsch. It relies heavily on the sequence. What is the sequence of knowledge? And I'll show it to you in just a second. What is the sequence of knowledge that a kindergartner should know, a first grader should know, a second grader should know, and on and on? And so the idea is that we have an informed citizenry with shared knowledge, so we all know the same things and can talk about the things as citizens. And that's going to be specific, in this case, to science and specific to social studies. For math, we have Singapore math. It's focused on conceptual, pictorial, and abstract. So we're thinking about developing foundational skills, foundational knowledge, K-8, and then we're thinking about what that application looks like at high school. And then, Oregon Day is based in Core Knowledge. However, they have adopted some of the Hillsdale-recommended readings, which are primary source documents, and they have the addition of virtues and a classical instructional approach. So when I talk about what that sequence looks like, and by the way, Core Knowledge is actually free on the internet, you can see what the sequence is, you can download it, you can look at their materials. But what we see is there is a sequence that develops over time, but it's also cyclical in nature. So for example, when I look at kindergarten, Five Senses, Plants, Seasons, and Weather, Taking Care of the Earth, but if we take, like, the Five Senses, we can see in first grade, they're talking about the human body. Second grade, they're talking about the human body. Third grade, life cycles, traits, variations, looking at, in sixth grade, metabolism. And so things are connected and related, and they continue to go back to core concepts and core knowledge, hence Core Knowledge. They keep, sorry, I just cracked myself up. They keep going back to that core information and developing it cyclically at a more appropriate grade level over time. So then we can see seventh grade, we continue that foundational knowledge of science. So now, thinking, what do students know? Secondly, we need to know who our students, who are the students we're serving at high school? We have 1,849 students, 34% are on free and reduced lunch. We have 1,849 students, 34% are on free and reduced lunch. And then we want to think about, well, what are they doing after high school? 31% are attending a four-year school, 23% two-year school, 5% vocational or tech school, 6% military, 3% are planning on going on a mission, and 31% are, are going straight into the workforce. And again, so how are our science courses preparing them for that? The one way is, are we offering enough lab sciences? The four-year school kids, they need three years of a lab science. And then are the sciences that we're offering applicable for the workforce? So in addition to what do kids know, who are our students, we also need to know who are our teachers. They're primarily who are delivering that information. And so as you know, many schools are faced with the greening of the profession. We know that teachers are coming with less experience, they're staying for a shorter period of time. But what we can see is our science department is actually pretty stocked with veterans. And so we can see that most of our teachers have more than 10 years' experience, then we see between four and 10 and zero to three. But making sure that our adoption supports teachers at all of those different levels of experience. Again, thinking about what our goal here is, our goal is a guaranteed and viable curriculum. So we know that the most important thing, in addition to a quality effective teacher, is that our students have both a guaranteed and viable curriculum. So we know that it's guaranteed because specific content is taught in specific courses and at specific grade levels, regardless of who the teacher is. Viable says that there's enough time. So it is not fair that students have Mr. Barney, he's amazing, he teaches all the things, but then this group of students have Mr. Such-and-Such, who doesn't teach all the things. We want to know that all of our students have access to a guaranteed and viable curriculum. The purpose of science is to develop a scientific understanding of the natural world. Students must be able to ask questions, gather information, reason about it, and connect it to scientific principles, theories, or models, and then effectively communicate their understanding and reasoning. The current curriculum that we are using in science is actually this curriculum from 2006. And so this is a recommendation that it is carried forward. So we looked at all sorts of different curricula, and this was what was chosen. It just happens to be the previous one, too. So some things specifically about Savis. What the teachers liked is that the online platform that supports students was really aligned with the text. There was a parents' corner to support parents as they are supporting their students. Also, there were parent letters. And so this is very important as we're trying to more effectively communicate with families about what their students are learning. And so all of our adopted curriculum, at this point, we have unit or chapter letters that are going home. And so Savis, although they didn't have this previously, they do now, and they're willing to work with our teachers to create those letters home. Is that enough talking? Their assessment platform actually also was outstanding. And so when we look at this assessment platform, it, if you look, there's like two groups of students. These students scored less than 70%, but these students scored higher than 70%. And so this assessment platform allowed teachers to assign differentiated materials based on how students scored. It also had, the assessment tool was embedded within the platform, so it wasn't an additional There's a recommendation from Savis for Flynn Labs, and they have a, a large variety of labs that we can purchase upfront, and then the science department can keep them stocked over time. But it allows the, the science department to have less time that they're working on those lab purchases and then to ensure that they are aligned to the units. Also, there's recommendations for shortened labs, advanced labs, guided labs, all of the different labs and simulations that teachers will need. Stakeholder feedback about this. So this is the committee. There was a unanimous selection of Savis. The vendor was very responsive. It gave feedback to students immediately. The data analysis, the grouping of students, parent and family supports, more engaging simulation labs, automatic assigning remediation and/or enrichment. The textbook was easier to read. The content was more closely aligned to standards. Online training for mid-year hires or replacement teachers. You were able to edit PDFs within the platform and it was Google-friendly. So public feedback of the responses of people who came to view it. We had six people provide feedback using the QR code. And so concisely written and clear, they like the, the AP options, consumables. There's also options for scaffolding and supporting newer teachers, clearing concise information, and the textbooks were incredibly comprehensive, logically organized to progress more comprehensive understanding. The graphics are fantastic. And so not everybody who viewed the curriculum participated in this, but this is the data that, that we have. The cost overview, the overall cost over seven years is just over $170,000. The items, digital licenses, class sets of textbooks, teacher PD, and textbook materials. And then you can see that breakdown per student per year. So while that number seems very, very large, thinking about all of the students who are engaging in science over a seven-year period, and also looking at teacher professional development, et cetera. As a note, lab materials will be purchased outside of this adoption. So our next steps will be selecting units of instruction, developing a scope and sequence and pacing guide, working with a subcommittee to identify labs, differentiate any honors coursework, creating the professional development for teachers, and supporting and evaluating the implementation process. And that is all I have for science.
So I just want to clarify some comments on these. So when the RFP goes out, it goes out on our website, correct?
It goes out on our website, it goes out in a publication, which I believe by law is the Kingman Daily Minor, because it has to be the county seat. So we put it out in, in compliance with law.
And if I remember, we have a database that vendors can be on, that they get notified anytime we put out an RFP, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that could be for any vendor, right?
Any vendor.
All right. One thing that I, I just hate is we were calling this textbook adoptions, because it's so much more than that. These are very robust materials. In 2006, it was, here's the textbook and here's the classroom. We're moving towards one-to-one. I think Ms. Fessideagle mentioned that, you know, the parents really felt this engaged them more. We are moving towards that one-to-one. Just as kind of a note, one thing that I was impressed at, those of you who know me, there is math help available for them at their house when their parents can't do it in science and videos and things like that. Not available before, but we have that now. The other thing that I really wanted to kind of point out is their willingness to work with us. Many of the community concerns were addressed in those meetings. I know Ms. Roman was there as well. Savis was really the only one who got back to us on a majority of the things, like the parent letters, certain details on, on different things. And they were really willing to work with us and kind of modify as they need. And this was also kind of with teachers. So if the teachers found that there was something, wait, why doesn't the gradebook do this? Why isn't it, why can't I go and do this one little thing that makes my life really very much easier? They would go, I don't know, let's work on it. And they found it worked for them and they were communicative to them. So I think those were kind of those really big things. I think you can't say enough about getting a robust curriculum for this. One thing I would like to say, too, one thing that we noticed, because we were very much involved. I think we, we were talking with Jamie and Dr. Stone about what's going on here. So those of you who are kind of interested about curriculum and where it falls, so like for Oro Grande, we have core knowledge and then augmented with Hillsdale, and Hillsdale was something that recommended core knowledge. We found out we went on the Hillsdale site and Savis is one of their recommended vendors to have for a robust system for that. So I just want to kind of add those things into the discussion.
I kind of took all of my talking points. I did, especially, I was impressed with the math help that you mentioned, because it is built right into their system as the students are looking at things online. If there's a science concept where they're not familiar with how to do the math component of that science concept, I think, it said something about nerd, I think it's like Ask a Nerd or.
Virtual.
Virtual nerd, okay, thank you. So it just gives you a small little tutorial, like maybe a five-minute lesson on how to do that math. And so I really was impressed with that. And then also the parent communication, because I have kids in high school, it, just with the math and the English department, I have really appreciated the communication that I've received ever since we've implemented those parent letters. Just getting a simple heads up of, you know, we're reading such-and-such in your child's English class helps me as a parent ask my kids more specific questions, so I don't just get, you know, fine or good or kinds of responses from my children when I ask them questions. I can ask them things that are specifically tailored for what they are learning, and I, I appreciated that about Savis.
One other thing I forgot to mention, let me put it in here really quick, is that the process that we have is impressive. Community involvement, this is us that we're doing it as a community. It wasn't, I've been through a lot of different curriculum, textbook adoptions throughout my career, and the inclusion of the community, the parents, the, the students, the teachers. And when you get that many, those folks together, they don't agree on a lot. They really don't. There was a lot of good discussion on different things, and at the end, and this, when we're talking about a unanimous kind of recommendation, this was blind. We didn't know who was going to vote for what in this. We all kind of saw the presentations, we looked over the books, we had our opinions, and then, you know, the first vote is, okay, let's see where we are. And guess what? It was, hands down, this was the one that represents our community. So I think that was something that very much impressed me. I can tell you, we put them through the wringers. Those of you who, you know, have home construction and do things like that, when you get quotes, I hope you put them through the wringers. We put the textbook folks through the wringers and they, they knew it. They were like, wow, your process is really, really inclusive, you have all these things going on, and, you know, they were impressed with our process. Now I will stop.
I like the fact that it's involved with core knowledge. That helps us. I think the next step is what we should take. I move that we adopt 6.2 as presented.
Any other discussion?
Any other discussion or a second?
I will second enthusiastically.
Any public concern? Any public discussion? Anybody out there?
Well, school board, David Diaz, resident of Lake Havasu City. I wanted to, be a big thank you to Jamie Fessideagle, because I've been loving her for.
For like a couple of months now.
Yeah, yeah. A couple of months now, and very impressed with the process and also Ms. Stone on the openness, engaged a lot of people that came and looked at the school books and got some good feedback, and it really put some people's fears at ease. And I am a little concerned, though, about, we only had two public meetings, or there was two parents that, that came to the meeting. Is that, was that in that one slide, six?
Yes.
And there's 1,800 high school students. And where are all the parents? It's, and she's making her head, yes, I, I think she knows what I'm talking about. So, but I think in the long run, we're making a good decision. I personally came in here and looked at all the books myself. We had a bunch of good people from our club came and looked at the books, and I think we're on the right track. So I, you guys did a lot, good job here, and thumbs up to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else ready for a vote?
John Mastin?
Yes.
Erica Rand?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes. Moving on to 6.3, student achievements, Savis, social studies, textbook adoption for grades nine through 12.
And there's more. Mr. President and governing board, LHUSD expanded core knowledge and CKLA-amplify curriculum to all K8 schools in 2122. The last textbook adoption for social studies at the high school was 2012. LHUSD textbook adoption committee unanimously recommends Savis, social studies textbooks, world history, US history, civics, economics, criminal justice, geography, psychology, sociology, AP psychology, and AP government as the approved textbooks, starting in 2324. LHUSD is committed to providing a guaranteed and viable curriculum, ensuring that all students have access to high-quality materials that support our mission and vision, are aligned to standards, and prepare students for their future. An RFP was put out in June of 2022 and closed in August of 2022. Using rubric, three vendors were selected for further review. A committee of stakeholders reviewed three options, which were on display for 60 days in the boardroom as required by policy and statute. The committee especially considered how the textbook provided instructional support to teachers and met the needs of LHHS students. Savis stood out in terms of usability for students, primary source document library, more recent publication dates, better assessment tools, supports for students with different needs, responsiveness and open parent communication tools. The LHHS Social Studies Department current textbook is also published by Savis. The cost to purchase seven years of student and teacher materials, digital licenses, and professional development is not to exceed $205,000, including tax and shipping and handling. By purchasing over the course of seven years, we receive a discount in the amount of 14%. The district will utilize Esser and other appropriate funds for completing this purchase. This item has been reviewed by the business department. The quote is attached and there is a presentation to follow. So this committee had a similar makeup, and so you can see there was four high school teachers, a middle school teacher, three district coaches, two administrators, two district administrators, two students, two parents, one superintendent, two board meetings, and one district T.O., teacher on assignment. I do want to note that the wonderful thing about living in Lake Havasu is so many of us that our school members, school employees are also parents. And so while it's, it's two on paper, and I understand it's two that aren't affiliated with school district, there were many parents that sat on the committee. Here's the courses that we are adopting for. I highlighted in purple around it, I don't know if you can see that, our core courses. So world history, US history, civics, and economics. Those are courses that are required for graduation. Everything else is an elective, with the exception of AP government, but that is a So thinking back to core knowledge and what students are coming to us with, again, we have knowledge that's developed starting in kindergarten and moving up through eighth grade. I cannot reiterate how important it is that we have a knowledge-based curriculum that starts in kindergarten, and we're teaching our students about things, so that way they have a depth of understanding by the time that they get to high school and beyond. And so you can see, again, those, those items, they interact with one another, they build upon one another. You can also see that there is a large integration of geography. And again, that's very important in understanding what history looks like, and I would say in years past, that wasn't there. So who are our social studies teachers? Again, we're looking at a fairly veteran department with five teachers with 10 or more years, three teachers between four and 10 years, and, and one teacher between zero and three years. three years. The purpose of social studies, sorry, I highlighted my favorite line of this, so we don't have to read it all. The purpose of social studies is to engage students in the pursuit of active informed citizenship, which requires a broad range of understandings and skills by thinking analytically, reading widely, and critically, and communicating cogently in a compelling manner. So again, our current curriculum is Prentice Hall, which is now Savas. This is the 2012 edition. And again, like Dr. Rand alluded to, so yes, it's a textbook, but it is also a platform where students are interacting with, and students are working within that platform. And so Savas is inquiry-based. It connects history to current events, digital media, the idea to hook and inspire. Believe it or not, not everybody thinks that history is the most interesting subject, I can imagine, but really ensuring that students are hooked and they understand the why of why they're learning this. Essential questions, and then I think what's most important is primary source documents with contextual knowledge. Again, something that we really liked here was parent letters, and the idea that we will be communicating every unit with families about what their student is learning. Savas was very responsive to us in helping us develop these letters. History that connects to students, and so the text has 50% text and 50% pictures, and I did have someone comment, like, why is there so many pictures? And I think when we're looking at history, that's actually really important. What is this image showing you? What questions are there about this? And so it is another way to engage learners. There is still all of that text about history. Differentiated materials, and so looking at materials that support learners who need audio skill, audio, differentiating for learners who do not speak English as their first language, and so just making sure we have all levels of support for students. Students are able to annotate and highlight within the textbook, so the digital version of the textbook is still a textbook, and they're able to annotate and highlight, but then more importantly, they're able to use the notebook feature, and so students can respond to questions. And so knowing that students learn by responding, by connecting it to things they already know, and so they, that tool is available for them. Stakeholder feedback, and again, Dr. Rand brought up something very good. We didn't like vote by show of hands, it was blind. I always have a second slide that's like, how do we come to consensus? And I haven't had to use it with either of these adoptions. Primary sources and questions, the visual, the navigation is easier. I think that's important to note is, in this case, our teachers are becoming learners. So we're having teachers, not all of us are digital natives, and so really, what's that support look like for teachers as they're teaching with this? And I think that's important. Balance, integrating what teachers already are doing with new materials, different versions of tests, leveled, parent access guided notes, the source itself was created for students who are digital natives. One platform, so we would have social studies and science together on the same platform, so we're not creating more and more platforms for students, resources for special needs students. There's asynchronous teacher training, so if there is a teacher that comes on mid-year, aligns with what teachers have used previously. Savas, again, was responsive. They communicated well with us. They have updated materials, updated language, there's not offensive language, and Pearson creates ACT, it could be a plus for students. So again, we had quite a few people look at the materials, not as many actually responded, but they did respond. One of the things that we did hear from the community is a concern about critical race theory, and so we reached out to both vendors, when there were two vendors, and Savas did respond to us that there is nothing within their adoption that is based on critical race theory, they don't suggest anything for critical race theory. I noted that they didn't have the criminal justice textbook in there, and I did want to make sure that there was a why. It's a career and technical education book, and so they, too, wrote me a letter specifically for that. So the cost for social studies is 186, a little bit over $186,000 over seven years, so that's about $27,000 a year. So digital licenses, class sets, teacher professional development, teacher materials, and that comes down to $18.71 per student per year. Our next steps are developing a scope and sequence and pacing guide for each course, identifying writing tasks. So in science, we're thinking about the labs. In social studies, we're thinking about the writing. What is social studies? How are we incorporating literacy and writing, differentiating honors coursework, identifying technology tools needed for implementation, creating professional development for teachers, and supporting and evaluating the implementation process? And I know you guys have to vote, but I do want to thank everybody who was involved in this, especially the parents and students, and also Tanya Gray and Larry Olson, who did the bulk of this work.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Larry.
And I did just want to comment, too, that I did sit on this board, and with us moving to one-to-one, and in a world where technology is extremely important, I think that having textbooks and technological capabilities are going to be important in the future. I think it's going to be something that's going to equip our students, you know, to be adaptable and to be relevant in the coming years, so.
I also sat on this committee, and it was interesting to see, this particular company had more updated information. The other companies were at 2015 for their statistical information. This company was at 2021, so we wouldn't have to update our curriculum quite so early. It was a good all-around program. It seemed to be very suited to the way the students have already been learning in their curriculum now. It also had, like, options of an app that you could take, if you go out of town for a sports trip, you could do your homework on the van or on the bus, and things like that. Those are good, interactive types of tools for students to keep working. One other thing is the support for teachers. We did have quicker responses out of Savas that we didn't get from the other companies, so we were quite pleased with their responsiveness toward us.
I just wanted to add one more thing I thought about with the process after Mr. Diaz talked, because, you know, concern is always about how involved our parents are. When we invite parents and students to be on these committees, you know, that can be intimidating for them. Teachers who are all talk and shop, you know, board members, all these folks. The folks who are running the meetings, Jamie, Larry, they were very good at first going to parents and first going to students. Of course, we hope we get more for those open meetings in the future, so we would continue to invite parents. I know in the past, anytime a student or a parent has come to Dr. Stone with an issue, she always invites them to be a part of the process. So I just wanted to add that into the discussion.
I move that we approve 6.3 as presented.
I'll second, but I did want to say one thing, also as a thank you to the community members who came in on their own time to look at the textbooks, because as noted in the graphs, they concurred with our, with the committee recommendations, and so it's very helpful when we have people who are not necessarily directly involved with the system coming in and giving their feedback. It really helps us as board members make a confident decision that we are approving something that is supported by our general community, as well as our parents and teachers and students, and the people who are directly impacted.
Anybody from the public? And I think we're ready for a vote.
Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
John Masden?
Yes.
Erica Rand?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
And before we move on, I would just really like to thank Jamie and her team, Larry, Tanya, and those who helped in this process. It's really a meticulous process. It takes a long time. It isn't a quick meeting and everybody's done. There were a variety of opportunities for our community to engage in the process. We do, again, appreciate those who did come on their own time to look at materials, those who attended those committee meetings, even though they weren't a part, but definitely that you, that our teams came to those committee meetings. And it was fascinating, as several members have said, in a blind vote, without question, it was 18 to nothing for both sets of adoptions. That's amazing. But also, there was robust discussions in those committees. It wasn't just everybody got on board and voted for one thing. There was time spent to discuss it, to talk about how it impacted kids, talk about how it impacted our teachers, and we just really appreciate that. I do think that both of these adoptions speak to our board's desire to be transparent with our parents. That's really important in those parent letters that will go home, and as our teachers work to develop that with the company, I think that's amazing. And I just want to thank everyone on the committee and these teams for their professionalism, and it took a lot of work to respond to every concern, both with the companies and just in the public in general. So I greatly appreciate all that, and I think the board's vote tonight speaks to all of your hard work in this process. So thank you.
Moving on to 6.4, business services, the job ordering and contracting for construction services.
Thank you, Mr. President and Board members. As part of the district's commitment to construct, remodel, and renovate school facilities, as communicated to voters and identified in the November 2016 bond voter pamphlet, the district is recommending building and site improvements at Lake Havasu High School to support the implementation of the district's one-to-one laptop initiative in grades nine through 12. The scope of work, while not a comprehensive list, may include the following: removing, installing, reconfiguring of interior and exterior walls, electrical, HVAC, flooring, ceiling tiles and grids, lighting, interior-exterior doors and windows. Concord general contracting will be procured as a JOC through the One GPA Cooperative Contract. Board Policy DJE states the maximum dollar amount of an individual job order for a job order contracting construction service shall be $2 million per project or as determined by the board. Concord is in the process of obtaining and finalizing bids and quotes from subcontractors and vendors. The district requests a not to exceed approval in the amount of $500,000 to provide owner contingency funds during the construction process. Bond capital and/or other allowable capital funds will be used to complete the project. This item has been reviewed and approved by purchasing.
Any discussion or motion?
Just a quick thing, as it gets to be more concrete on what they're doing, it will come back before the board, or is this just a general thing for all of?
It's a general, I can bring it back to the board as we, as we get those numbers, but we are coming to you tonight. A JOC, the purpose of a JOC is actually to bring on a contractor, we procure them, and then we, as a district, can then give them tasks to perform throughout the district under that approved amount. So what I'm coming to you tonight for that $500,000 not to exceed is to allow that to be earmarked for these improvements as needed, to build out the support for the one-to-one laptops that are going to be coming in within the next several months, and we need a place for them to be housed, worked on, getting ready for students, and also be checked in and checked out to students throughout the school year. So this would be, for the $500,000 would be to get us started as soon as we have a green light to go from the contractor, so we don't have to reconvene a board meeting for this specific purpose. Now, I, I think most of you know me well enough that I have no problem showing exactly every penny where the money's going. I can provide visuals at that time, that's actually my plan, to do that, to actually, once we identify the exact location, and once we start the build-out process, to have a follow-up. I don't know, it won't be an action item, but I can just provide some type of a follow-up to you.
That's perfect, thank you.
And I'm also not asking for this information tonight, but do you have an idea of where you want it to be, and are you thinking of building an entirely new structure or just remodeling something that already exists?
So right now, we have two areas of the campus identified. We, as of this moment, I don't know exactly which one we're going to build out, but it would be an existing area, and then making the renovations to that particular area. So no plans to actually construct a new building on that campus.
I like this, as a contractor, I like this. For those of you who don't know, I've got a contractor's license in low-voltage wiring, and I would do some of the work, and I think this is a good thing to do.
It'll come back before you. Again, I like visuals, I like numbers, you'll get them both as we, as we move along.
I move to approve 6.4.
Second.
Free for vote.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
John Masden?
Yes.
Erica Rand?
Yes.
Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes. Moving on to 6.5, business services, vouchers and student activity funds and auxiliary funds.
Thank you, Mr. President and Board members. Approval for vouchers, student activity funds, and auxiliary funds for January of 2023 are before you tonight.
I move that we approve it as presented.
Second.
Erica Rand?
Yes.
John Masden?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes. Moving on to 7.1, informational from the superintendent.
So we always have many positive things to share, and one of the things I'm going to ask Jamie after she shared tonight to come back to share with the board at a later time, but I'm just going to give you a little preview. Core Knowledge, the foundation, was here to visit our schools. They saw some amazing things. They talked about our schools possibly becoming schools of distinction, but that does not happen without the support of our student achievement coaches, our student achievement department, making sure that our teachers have that professional development, that they have that time to work with each other and go through all of those materials. But it was an amazing visit, and I would love for them to share some more details at a later time. So I just wanted to thank them tonight for that, and I will pass it over to you.
Anybody from the governing board?
I just want to highlight some nice STEM things. You know, those of you who know me, STEM is very important. So just to let you know what type of quality we're producing out here, one thing is, we're working on having, well, we have a program called STEM Scholars that we're growing some teachers to have passion projects with students and in the STEM field, and even right now, we are having some programs that are producing that. So I'm highlighting the Minions. I will highlight Tara Smith. She is the teacher that works with the Minions. They were third in state and are on the way to nationals. So they're a national, so that speaks to the quality. They're not just, you know, we're not just better than our area, they're competing nationals. Michelle Burke has a student that is a national award winner for NICWIT. It's a women's computing organization, a national winner. So we are producing some very, very good results in STEM here, and have some machinery to even augment that more as we go.
Do we have any others? Call the public?
We do not.
Then I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second. Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
John Masden?
Yes.
Erica Rand?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.